Good evening and welcome to the Town of Greater Napanee Regular Session of Council for the 10th of January 2023. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that this meeting is being recorded and live streamed on to the Town of Greater Napanee YouTube channel. So there's folks out there that are watching from near and afar. With that, I'll now call the meeting to order. I'll look for a motion to for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Shank and Councillor Hicks, all in favor? Opposed? Any questions, comments? Thank you. Motion has been carried. Number three, disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Is there anyone with any kind of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, moving on to number four, the public meeting under the Planning Act. We'll look for a resolution to convene a public meeting under the Planning Act. Look for a motion for that with respect to that. Councillor Pennell, Councillor Shank. Number 4.2 on the agenda. P, sorry. Oh, sorry, we'll need to vote on the motion. All in favor? Opposed, carried. 4.2 PLZACO 2022-096. The applicant is Amy Greenberg, Legal Description, Part Lot 21, Concession 3, Geographic Township of Richmond Township, County Road 41. The effect is to apply a holding symbol to the property zoning in accordance with the previously imposed condition of consent, which may be removed when the municipal water and sanitary sewer services are available or can be made. Now, I think Amy is here to speak to this, or is she?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, coming in by Zoom. Perfect. Hi, Amy, how are you?
Hi, I'm good and yourself?
Perfect. Just if you want to go right ahead, I think we'll let you go first. How's that sound?
Oh, no worries at all. I think it's it's pretty clear to say though, the holding is requested to keep the land vacant until a time that the provision can be appropriately addressed and the municipality would have to review in detail any proposed development in the future and would take into consideration whatever the concern may be in the future if the landlord chooses to move forward with the development.
Perfect. Has anybody got any questions of Amy? Seeing none. Michael, did you want to add to any of this?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, just just add for for background for members of council that weren't on the Committee of Adjustment at the time of the decision. This is this was for creation of a new law within the within the urban boundary of the municipality and the lands are zoned arterial commercials. So creation of new lots and new development within the urban boundary specifically within the arterial commercial zone shall be on full municipal services. So this lot does not yet have municipal services at the doorstep. So what this does is it will place a hold on those lands until those services are made available to those lands and then at such time that hold can be lifted to allow development to commence on the property. So that that was the condition in order to achieve zoning compliance and conformity with both official plan policy and provincial policy regarding new development in in urban areas. And I'm sorry, I just would note as a result of our discussions on December 20th with regards to decision making and timelines, this is staff would see this as fairly non controversial. So what we're recommending is that a decision be made on this and a bylaw passed this evening.
Yeah, great. Any any questions of Michael? Yeah, go ahead, Councillor Pennell.
Thank you through your worship, Michael. Just curiosity. The water and sewer, is that to be made possible on a future date by the municipality? Or if the owner wants to move forward faster, could they supply the water and sewer?
Through your worship, either the municipality could provide it or it could be done at these the expense of the of the property owner if they wish to move forward in an expedient manner.
Great, thank you. And I apologize, I should have just just I just want to remind everybody that that is speaking tonight up around the council chambers here anyways is that if you use your mic. I know some of the folks at the back are having a difficult time hearing. So bring the mic in nice and close and have at or so. Is there any other questions of Michael? Seeing none, and I guess I should have asked, is there anyone in the body of the council chambers speaking against this at all? Seeing none. We'll look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting, I believe. Sorry?
Did you do we want? Okay, never mind. Sorry. I'm out of order. And when these here.
Usually it's me, Dave. We'll look for for a motion to do it during the public meeting then. Deputy Mayor Calvert, Councillor Hicks, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, moving on to deputations, 5.1. I see that we have someone here from Blue Earth Renewables and I believe that they've requested speak. So come on up, folks, if you can just come up here, it'd be greatly appreciated. Yeah, good evening. How are you tonight? Just yeah, and I'm sorry, if you just for the people that are watching, you could just provide your names for for the for the clerk.
Yes, for sure. My name is Daryl Shear.
Is it on now? Yeah, there we go. Sorry. 10 years' experience with infrastructure project management. We are here tonight representing Blue Earth Renewables. We are a independent power producer that acquires, develops, owns, operates, wins solar, hydro and hopefully storage facilities across North America. We have a portfolio that is but one gigawatt worth in operation. We have a team that spans acquisition, development, financing, engineering, operations. You know, we are, we are also the current owner of Little Creek Solar Project, just a little bit south here of Napanee. We are proud to be part of the community and we look forward to working with you and strengthening the local economy, get back to the community for decades to come. We are committed to being a good neighbor throughout the life cycle of projects through ongoing dialogue with stakeholders, ensuring channels are open for people to voice concerns and that we are available to respond effectively. Maybe moving on to slide three, the next one, please. Perfect. We are head offices based in Calgary, Alberta. We have a office here in Gulf, Ontario, one Vancouver, and then more recently an office in Phoenix, Arizona. In Ontario here, we have a number of solar ass projects, wind projects. Similarly, in Alberta, Saskatchewan, and mostly hydro in B.C., we're actively growing our U.S. development pipeline and have over five gigawatts of power generation in in development. More recently, the Ontario Independent Electricity System Operator has announced a fairly extensive new power call for new capacity base power generation projects. They're seeking about 4,000 megawatts of new capacity by 2027, 2,500 of that being allocated to energy storage and about 1,200 to new natural gas fired generation. This is to meet the the continued growth of Ontario, continued reliability of the electricity system here in the province. And we are here tonight in response to this power call by the Ontario Independent Electricity System Operator.
Next slide, please. So so we're proposing a project in the municipality of Greater Napanee. It's located 10 kilometers from the town center of of Napanee and we've co-located this with our solar facility called Little Creek Solar. We're proposing a 50-megawatt facility that can store energy for up to four hours using battery energy storage technology of lithium ion iron phosphate. We're proposing to put this project forward in the ISO's expedited process RFP and planning on having a project that can be commercially ready by May 2026. And next slide, please. So what we've done to date, we've done a lot of early development activities to date on this project to get it ready to submit for the upcoming proposal next month. We've co-located with the project. We've we've completed a 10% engineering, doing the initial environmental and regulatory work. We've met with the municipal staff. We're here today to meet with the municipal council. We've done an initial stakeholder engagement session in the town of Napanee that was done on November 23rd and we got lots of great feedback from different community members that we're going to incorporate into our planned project. And we're currently working through a partnership to partner with an indigenous community and just finalizing the the final steps on that one. Next slide, please. And so as part of this project and as part of all Blue Earth projects, we strive to be not only good members of the community but provide benefits and do a strong job of engagement. So with this project, we'll bring different employment opportunities in terms of not not only during the construction phase but during the operational phase. We'll be we'll be requiring some maintenance and potentially some new operators to our our operations group, brings new investment to the community in terms of a new development as well as additional municipal tax revenues as as the land useful. It's currently renewables, but the the assessment should increase and then as well, it'll add grid stability to to the area. In terms of community engagement, we have a project website that's continually updated. We provide updates on there as they're readily available with the link on the page there. We hosted the community public meeting. We have the municipal partnership and we are here today at the council meeting to spread, share more information about the project as well as ask for for then excuse me. Ask for municipal support and we'll get more into that in the next steps here. So if you move to the next slide, the next steps with this project, we're continuing engagements. We're continuing to hear feedback from landowners and community members. We have an email here that that we ask the public, we ask council, anyone if they have questions or comments or any kind of feedback to please send that to us at Blue Earth where we're open to hearing from everyone. We'll provide those updates on the website and continue to work with our indigenous partner to formalize that agreement to give some context on on the dates of the procurement and where the project is at. We are putting forward our proposals for February 16th. That is the deadline for proponents to submit their proposals. And if successful, proponents will find out in May if they're selected by the ISO for a project. And so the reason why we Blue Earth are here in addition to informing council about our proposed development is to ask for a municipal support resolution, which in essence is to support the principle of this development. With that, the procurement process has has two kind of components where municipal support is important. Before that February 16th deadline, proponents that can receive support from a municipality, they'll receive rated criteria points for this project and for the the RFP, which will enhance the the ISO's ability to select that project in in the process. If that resolution is not received before the 16th, if your project is selected for the procurement, proponents will have 18 months to go through their approval processes, get the regulatory permits as well as obtain a support letter through the municipality. And I just wanted to highlight one last thing that by no means is a support resolution and approval on the project itself. It's it's demonstrating in principle that that the community is supportive of this type of project. There we still have to go through the full planning process, all the regulatory requirements and approvals as well as environmental studies. So this is just an additional step to all of that. And that summarizes our presentation. Is there any questions from councillor staff?
Great. Any questions from council? Go ahead, Councillor Pennell.
Thank you worship through you, either Daryl or Matthew. On on November 23rd, you had a public meeting, I think it was held at the Stratton Paper Center. I unfortunately only learned about it that night and already had a pre-booked engagement. Could you tell me how it was attended? Approximately how many people were there and what kind of feedback that you got?
So the notification requirement was to notify the municipality. So we did that to, I guess, the general town hall mail address. So I'm unsure how that was mailed out. We did a newspaper article and then notified the adjacent landowners. One of the feedbacks that we received from some of the landowners at the meeting is because of the area that we're in, there's some parcels that aren't directly adjacent and they missed out on getting the notifications. That was something that we learned from the meeting. In terms of numbers of people that showed up, it was about 10 to 15 different community members and mostly those directly located adjacent to the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any go ahead, go ahead, councillor.
I do. Thank you, worship. I have a question to our our chief of emergency services. And what my question would be, chief, is I'm sure you've had a chance to read through their proposal and I'm just wondering through the lens of emergency services, if you foresee any issues with this project going forward, both in a hazardous material state and also as fire suppression.
Through the chair, thank you councillor for the question. And yes, we have, we've viewed both depositions this evening. We're more than capable in responding to all sorts of emergencies, including stored potential energy and these banks will be used for four hours of of power. So they're not going to be used constantly, is my understanding, up to four hours of power to put back into the grid. The choice of of material being used in these banks is beneficial to us in this way. It's not, it's not going to produce thermal runaway. It's not, they're not. The the material itself doesn't have an explosive characteristic like an ion lithium ion batteries that we've heard about in the in the papers and responded to in fires in our location. So we have no, no issues with this at all with response or the stability of the of the sites.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor.
Through your worship, Daryl and and Matthew, you want, do you need, I know you talked about when you need this or do you need it tonight or or do we have some time on this? When you're putting, how much more time do you need prior to you putting your submission for you to receive the letter if we choose to do so?
Ideally, before the February 16th date, but present our RFP materials will be have to be prepared in advance. So several days before that would be at the latest. So I think that would give you a council meeting to prepare.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Shank.
Now, when you put in the solar farm, but was there any conditions that have been not been met? Like, you know, they were supposed to put shrubs up ahead of time, like some of the landowners that you contacted to go to this public meeting also, they had questions. They asked you 10 questions and maybe one question was answered, all right, on several because they had contacted me because when I found out about it. Other councillors, are you aware of this? So are all the conditions been met or can I ask Mike that? Do you deal with that, Mike? Like where there's supposed to be hedging or trees in front? Because one of the individuals that's very close, they had some concerns about having a sea can across from their house and none of the hedging that was done to begin with that was supposed to have been in place. Is this correct?
Through your worship, the solar facility was able to proceed without planning act approvals. That was in the the days that the Green Energy Act was in effect. So that site was exempt from any planning approvals. This site, this proposal in front of council this evening will be subject to site plan control. So the zoning permissions are in place to allow this on the property. However, if the support resolution is passed and if this comes back and to the municipality for approval, further approval, we would have the control through site plan control to ensure that the site is developed in a manner that the municipality would like to see. So yes, we could build in those buffering requirements and address those previous concerns through that avenue.
Yep, great. Anything further?
So one thing I would say is that I'm not comfortable giving a resolution tonight of endorsement, but Mike, if is there any way you could come back or work with Blue Earth, they could give you give you a concept drawing, something that we could nail them down to that oh, that this is exactly what they're going to do. And if you could go through that list of 15 people that did attend and answer those questions to those landowners because they're the ones you're going to have to satisfy because it was across from me and I would make sure that it was done. And if they're happy with it, then Mike, can you give us a concept of basically what they're going to do? Then we can discuss it further.
Yep, and and I thank councillor Pennell and councillor Shank for 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 doing my work for me because I that's where I was heading with this. My question with I'm sorry, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Go ahead, councillor cover and I'll speak to it afterwards.
Yeah, basically, I was going to reiterate the same thing. We've got time before having to make a decision on anything here tonight as we do have another meeting in January to take a look at this and ask some other questions. You know, I was just curious, you know, how many battery banks we're talking, how many C cans we're talking.
Sorry. Right now, what we're proposing as our initial build would be about 90 C cans at the beginning of life.
90, correct. And what's the lifespan of these these batteries?
20 years.
20 years, okay. And let's see, what's recycled? How do they, how do we recycle them? What happens in 20 years?
Yeah, so we're working with the original equipment manufacturer that does the the original supply on recycling end of life repurposing. Our understanding right now is about 95% of the battery chemistry is recyclable. So they're able to recycle the base lithium that was part of the batteries, the base iron phosphate, you know, other sort of copper materials that were you know, part of the manufacturing process.
So if there was a leakage of these batteries and it did become toxic, like what kind of, how fast would it spread type thing? Like, is it liquid? Is it?
No, it's solid state. So the, yes, the batteries are very similar to your cell phone battery, just a slightly different chemistry to make it a little bit less costly and and less flammable than a cell phone battery has been in in the past. So it's solid state. It's not like your lead acid battery that you may have had traditionally. So.
Yeah, because anything I read on them, like they're they're very safe batteries, but there is always potential for anything, right? That's what I was trying to figure. So the C cans, would they be like a 40 foot C can?
No, a 20 foot by like nine and a half high.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, gentlemen, I thank you for coming tonight. Normally with with deputations, we're not here to to make decisions. And and so one of my questions, which which councillor now last was we have another regular session of council on the 31st of January. If we if we ask or request our staff to bring back a report with respect to any of the the questions that were asked tonight and maybe others as as they come in, will the 31st of January, if we can come up with a resolution, then will that give you still enough time to to put your applications in is really what I'm asking for?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's submission time.
Would that be fair? Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. It sounds like a well worthwhile project. And maybe what we'll do is we'll look for a a motion to note receive the deputation from Blue Earth and as well direct staff to report regarding the deputation be brought back on the 31st of January meeting. Is that, that doesn't cut you too tight, Michael? We should be good there?
Through your worship, no, that'll be sufficient as long as we're able to connect and and get some concept plans drawn up and get a get a sense of how the site's going to be developed and I I'd be confident that we could make that deadline.
Great. So we'll have our people talk to your people and we'll see if we put this thing together. So as with respect to the motion, councillor Pennell, councillor Hicks, any other further conversation or questions? All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I guess it sounds like it's thank you. Something that's a worthwhile venture for us. So thank you for for coming. 5.2, the Atura Power, we have a request for municipal support from the folks from Atura Power. And I sense that it'll be somewhat very similar to the one we probably heard with with a little few differences, but we just get you to identify yourself, sir, and then you're more than welcome to to tell us what you have to tell us. So. Well, just to get you to check the mic there to see, we just, I know some of the folks are having right on the top there. Is there a?
Okay, is that? Oh, perfect. Okay.
I think we're live now. So go ahead, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I I think maybe I'll just start off a little bit about Atura Power. So Atura Power was formed in 2019. It's a subsidiary of Ontario Power Generation and Atura operates for combined cycle gas generation facilities across the province with a capacity of just over 2,700 megawatts. So we're the, we're the largest operator of of natural gas power plants in Ontario. So we are owned, you know, as as an OBG subsidiary, we're ultimately owned by the province and our and our goal is to provide value to repairs, taxpayers. You know, in 2021, we returned, you know, 390 million to the to the province, you know, and I think we're on track to provide over 400 million back to the province this year. You know, we look to reduce our our buying costs by combining with with OBG's procurements and and have a real focus on increasing the amount of money that we spend each year in Ontario. So just really, really looking to source locally. We employ 150 employees in Ontario. 24 of those are at the Napanee Generating Station. We're committed to, you know, strong safety, environmental performance and building mutually beneficial relationships with our host communities. In in addition to, you know, our core business of of, you know, natural gas generation, we're looking to really expand and grow our business and and really help lower greenhouse gas emissions in the sector. So we're a leader in hydrogen production and use. We're building the first you know, hydrogen production and then coal firing facility in Ontario. So that'll that'll ultimately produce hydrogen with fossil free hydroelectric generation and then, you know, during times when there's there's surplus generation on the system and then we're in that in a natural, well, we'll reduce the amount of natural gas that would have been fired in a in a conventional power plant to reduce emissions. We're also looking to expand into to battery energy storage, which is really the the purpose of of the presentation today. So just a little bit more and better community outreach. So we have a community support agreement in place with with Greater Napanee. Last year, I think we donated over 200,000 to to support, you know, local community, community groups, I think the the largest of which was 100,000 dollars to the Lennox Nottingham Hospital. So we're very pleased to be able to provide that support. And and you know, this, I guess, is really, we're talking about the same thing as as the previous presentation. So Ontario has this imminent need of additional generating capacity and, you know, that's really needed to to keep the the electricity system reliable. The, you know, ISO has created several procurement processes to procure those new resources and, you know, our focus, you know, this this current project is is really on a proposal that would go into the expedited procurement so that that procurement has a deadline of February the the 16th. And so, yeah, again, how how battery energy storage operates. So essentially, it's a resource that uses surplus energy. So this is really energy from. uses surplus energy. So this is really energy from renewables or even hydroelectric capacity. So often at times, you know, like say at off peak times, there's surplus energy that would otherwise be wasted. So storage is able to basically, you know, charge using that energy and then store it and release it during times of, of need on the system and that, and that. So it has the benefit of meeting peak demand, but it also helps to reduce the amount of fossil fuel that needs to be generated almost peak hour. So, so ultimately reduces overall grid emissions. So in terms of, you know, are the, the physical project site we're proposing, so this would be located to the east of the existing Napanee Generating Station. And, and you'll see, you know, in that area, you've, you also have OBG's Lennox Generating Station. That's, that's a little bit further, further to the west. And there's also Hydro One's Lennox Transformer Station. And, you know, really that, that transformer station is really the backbone of the, the Ontario electricity grid. And, and that's really the, the key driver for seeking to locate a project here. This is, this is a spot where you know, a, a project like this is able to provide significant value to the Ontario electricity system. So assuming we're awarded a contract from the ISO, our target would be to start construction in late 2024. We'd look to have the facility in service by early 2026. You know, once it's in service, you know, we forecasted it would reduce, you know, Ontario GHD emissions by, you know, up to 100,000 tons per year. And we'd expect there to be a local economic benefit. So this is in terms of, you know, the, the spending during construction of about $70 million. And, and in terms of the project size, I don't, maybe I didn't specifically mention that, but we're, we're looking to, this would be an, an up to 500 megawatt sized battery storage facility. Just thought it was worth mentioning. So this, the, this is, this project is located within the special, a special area. So it's the Lennox Generating Station Industrial Development Area that defined in the official plan. So, you know, we think the project's consistent with, you know, the existing use of the site, electrical power generation. And, you know, and it, it's an industrial use that essentially uses that, that nearby infrastructure. And so this, this is just to give you a general idea of, of the site layout. So what you'll see, so this, this area is, is basically an area that was used for lay down for the construction of the original Napanee Generating Station. It's since been remediated and we'd look to locate in the, basically in the center of that property. So what you, you know, what you see to the right would be, you know, banks of batteries. So that, you know, they store DC electrical energy. And then that gets converted to, to AC energy through invert, inverter system, which ultimately gets goes through a transformer system to increase the voltage to, to connect and, and deliver that electricity to the grid. Just another picture, just to give you more, a little bit more of an idea of what these look like in, in real life. So this is a facility of a similar size that was installed in, in California. And it's, and you can see the, the kind of conventional power plant there in the background. So that, that power plant is pretty similar in physical size to the, the, either the Lennox Generating Station or the Napanee Generating Station. So just, just to give you an idea, perspective, if you're familiar with what those plants look like now, and, and, you know, you can, you can just gives you a point of reference to, to understand what the battery facility might look like. So in terms of our engagement plans, so we've, you know, we've, we've sent notices of the project to adjacent landowners. We've posted notices for, for a public meeting around in the community in Bath. We have a, a website up for the project. So we have a, a meeting tomorrow night where we've invited just local indigenous communities to join for information on the project. And then that's, that'll be followed by another meeting on Thursday that's open to the general public for, for further information on the project. And, you know, again, so what we're, we're really looking for ultimately is, you know, that, that municipal sport resolution, you know, it doesn't, doesn't preclude the, the planning process or that, I mean, that you, you know, that approvals process that we would go through. But yeah, just really looking for that confirmation of support. And, you know, I think, I think as it was mentioned earlier, so it's, it's, you know, I'd say, well, it's not technically a requirement for proponents to have this support resolution in place at the time of bid. I mean, I would argue that, I mean, it's probably would be pretty unlikely our project would go ahead without that. I mean, A, it's, it's a lot of risk to proponents to propose a project without having at hand. There's, there's a lot of, uh, there's a, there's a non-refundable security deposit that gets submitted along with the bid. So if a project ultimately wasn't, you know, had an, had an issue, wasn't able to secure that support resolution that, you know, they, they'd lose that deposit. So for a bit of risk there. And then also the way the ISO's point system works in any way that it awards, you know, a certain number of points to a project having that resolution upfront. It would, it'd be probably fairly unlikely that a project that didn't have that resolution would ultimately get selected through that process. So yeah, that it's, it's a, it's, this is a pretty critical step, I think, for any, any project looking to, to participate in that procurement. Yeah. So that was everything I had prepared.
Any, any questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Penel.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Brad. Just have a question for you. Number six on the community engagement. Public meeting held for January, the 12th says it's virtual. Is that still true? So virtual meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Could we have how people can, can attend this meeting then? So that we can put that out on?
Yes, certainly. Yeah. I mean, we, we have, yeah, we, we have a project or an email on our website that, that people can, can contact and, and register for.
Great. Thanks. If you could leave that with us tonight.
Yeah, we'll do.
Appreciate it. The, the other question is on one of your slides here. Just curiosity here, Ontario electricity needs, something's happening between 2031 and 32. It actually drops off and then comes up again. Just curious of what, what we think is going to happen there.
Yeah. Um, you know, I don't have that number off the top of my head. That would really be a question for the, the independent electricity system operator. I suspect it has to do with scheduling a major outage. Is it, you know, it might be like a nuclear refurbishment outage or something like that. Like there may be a unit that comes back online. And that, you know, temporarily reduces that gap. I mean, if you look at even kind of further work that the ISO has published now, I mean, they, they're looking towards kind of pathways to decarbonization. And, and frankly, there's, there's a huge future demand for electricity generation that's forecasted. So this is probably really just the start in, in, you know, a bit, a bigger shift to, to come.
Great. Thank you. And just one more.
Yep.
Thank you, your worship chief. Just I, I heard you mention it that you're okay with this project as well, but can we just confirm that?
Absolutely. Through the chair, emergency services has no, no issues with the location or operation of the battery storage banks.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Shank.
My only question is again, is that like your site layout, your picture here is the fence that you've got going and it's going right through the berm that was put there in place to obstruct the view of your, any development that was in the past. That's what a lot of the landowners around wanted. They didn't want to have that, you know, in your face plant look. All right. There used to be a cornfield at one time. They went ahead and you planted trees in it. Now you have to take the trees back out of it. But is there any way moving that back further or showing some type of a basic layout again to Michael Nobles, something that we have a better concept with? Because now you're getting further east and you have the mortons that are right onto the east side of it. And the only reason why I'm going down this road again is that I was on the committee when it was being built and I don't have a, I, I don't have a ring on my finger as an engineer. And I said, guys, I've lived in that area all my life with the Northwest wind, the steam coming off of that, you're going to frost up and all the engineers at the plant said, no, Mike, you're, no, we've done all our studies and did all our studies and you're incorrect. Well, shows that I didn't have to go to university, become an engineer to prove that I was right and they were wrong. But that's the reason why I'd like to see it first to see what you're going to do, what you're, what you're, where are you going to place them? And also are you going to create a berm on the other side? So the mortons and the other individuals that are, where, you know, that are further down, the residents that are further down, don't have to see, you know, how many solar can, you know, I mean, C cans there. That's, I'd just like to see that concept first. So they can, I know exactly what you're doing.
Yeah. And certainly I can see like we've, we've been working on a visual rendering for the project. So it, it wasn't ready in time for, for this meeting package, but we, we have that on hand. And we've, we've pre tweaked that a little bit as well, just so that the project is, is within, so that the project doesn't, you know, wouldn't disrupt that berm. So it is able to make use of that, that berm that's along the road for visual screening.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's definitely the, the intent. Yeah. Is to, to screen the site from the roadway.
I can see that. And after your public meeting and hear their comments, then yeah.
Absolutely. Is there, is there any other comments or questions? And again, sir, I, I think it sounds like a very viable project. We, we as a council, I think, just as you heard, we want to make sure we do our due diligence on it. As far as the timelines go, I'll ask you the same question I asked the gentleman before. Now we have a meeting on the 31st of January. If we direct staff to come back with a staff report with respect to this and a possible resolution, will that give you enough time to meet your deadlines with respect to the 16th of, of February?
Yes, it would.
It will. So perfect. So I think what we'll do is we'll look for a resolution to note, receive the, the deputation from a chair and direct staff to bring back report on the 31st of January with a possible resolution. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Norrie. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you again, sir. And, and like I say, it sounds very viable. So thank you. Okay. Is sir, before we move on through the deputations, I know that I think we still have a resolution on the book. Is there anybody in the body of the council chambers that wishes to do a deputation without notification? Seeing none? We'll move on. Thank you. 6.1 adoption of the minutes. We'll look for a motion with respect to the regular session of council December 2022 with a recommendation that the minutes of the regular session of council dated December 20th, 2022 be adopted as presented. Moved by councillor and now seconded by deputy mayor Calver. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. 6.2 special session of council December 19th, 2022 recommendation that the minutes of the special session of council dated December 19th, 2022 be adopted as presented. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Shank. Any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Correspondence for information. Now I know a list of correspondence for information that has gone out to council. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull out and have a conversation about? Councillor Penel?
Yes.
Okay. Which, which one do you want to speak to about? Speak to, speak about?
Oh, thank you worship. I, I was just hoping that we could pull the letter from the city of Kingston regarding bill 23. I noticed that they do have a couple of letters in, in there. So I just want to make sure that it's bill 23 and, and so that we can offer a letter of support for them as well.
Okay, great. And I'll look to madam clerk. Do we want to do a motion to note and receive the others first? Or would we want to do a motion with respect to bill 23 that councillor Penel wants to speak to?
Through your worship, past practice has been to note and receive all of the correspondence first and then deal with anything that's been pulled out from that.
Great. Look for a motion to note and receive councillor Penel, councillor Hicks, comments, questions, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to Okay. So now we'll talk about, do we need a motion for that?
Sure.
Yeah. So we'll look for a motion with respect to the correspondence received from the city of Kings on bill 23. Moved by councillor Penel, seconded by councillor Hicks. Go ahead, Dave. You want to speak to it first?
Well, I, I just, you know, bill 23 is, is important and they, they're making some really good points on that letter regards to how the municipality is going to recoup money and, and they're asking for direction that way from the Ontario government. So I think that it would be nice for us to, to write a letter of support for that.
Councillor Penel is looking for a letter of support. Is any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Well, we need a motion for the letter of support. Can we do it under this motion?
Yeah. If, if all of council knows that what we're voting on is that the town of Greater Napanee issue a letter of support for the correspondence received from the city of Kingston regarding bill 23.
Everybody understands that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Correspondence for action 7.2. I think that's where we're going next. I don't see any on our agenda. Moving forward, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that somebody can, or anybody wants to speak to or about? Seeing none? 9.1 staff report growth and expansion. E L A Z C O 2022 0963, the rezoning report. I think, Michael, you're probably up for this one. Look for a motion actually put on the floor first. Councillor Penel. Councillor Martin, go ahead, Michael. And there's, there's an indication that Amy Greenberg may enter the meeting. And do we know if she's coming back or? She is? Okay. Well, maybe wait till Amy gets back in or is she in now? Hi, Amy. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Great. Well, let, we'll let Michael go first. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Thank you, worship. I really don't have much more to add from our discussion during the public meeting. Really what we're, what staffer proposing is that this bylaw be passed this evening as it's fairly non controversial. And I'd be open to taking any questions that, any further questions that, that council might have with, or goes to this, this holding provision on the lands.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Amy, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Your worship? No. I agree with Michael as well. So.
Perfect. So we have a resolution or recommendation that the council receive for information, the growth and expansion PLZACO 2022 0963 zoning report. And that further that council approved the zoning bylaw amendment, subject to the following conditions that council considered to decide the merits of written and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting. And that should new information be received or further input received, raise points for further consideration. This report and opinion herein be revisited as needed. We all clear? I think all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. 9.2 legislative services exotic animals. Is that you, Jess? Yeah. Okay. So we have a recommendation that council receive for information legislative services exotic by law, animals by law review report and further that council direct staff to bring forward an exotic animals by law to the next regular meeting of council. And with the list, the prohibited animals being revised based on public feedback received to date. So I'll need a motion. Move staff recommendation. Councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Hicks. Did you want to speak to this at all, Jessica or no?
Um, through your worship, I don't have anything to add, but I can take questions if there are any.
Any questions for Jessica with respect to the animal by law? Seeing none? Staff recommendation is? All good? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. 9.3 2022 post municipal election assess accessibility report. We have a recommendation that council receive for information legislative services 2022 post municipal election accessibility report. Moved by Norrie, seconded by deputy mayor Calver. And this is yours as well, I believe, Jessica?
Yes. So through your worship, this, this report is here for our statutory duty on this is not the end of our election assessment. If, as always, we will be continually reviewing what we can improve for the next election in 2026, but this is sort of the, the last check mark for completing the election as far as the act is concerned.
Great. Any questions or comments for Jessica? Go ahead, Mike.
I, I read the report and Jessica, I think it was an excellent report and it's kind of disheartening to see how when you're younger, you don't have few, they vote and the older demographics do vote, but it was very knowledgeable, well presented and commend you. It was a very good report. Thank you.
Anything else?
Other than it is, it's a very excellent report. Nice to see just how it broke down there. And it's amazing. It's, I don't know what we can do to try to get the younger people out to voice their opinion because at the end of the day, this is going to be their talent, right? So it's nice to get younger people out, but it's nice to see older people still, still interested for sure.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you. Anything else? I, I, I'm going to agree with councillor Shank and deputy mayor Calver. It, it's really interesting to see the breakdown of it and it is really cool. And it, it really does describe or, or present the demographics of our community. describe or, or present the demographics of our community. I know that at some point, there, there is some concern about the voter turnout, but the realistic, realistically speaking, we were still above the provincial average, even though we were well below where we were in twenty eighteen, we were still well above the, or above the provincial averages, but as far as voter turnout. Now, anytime voter turnout is less than a hundred percent, I think we should be concerned, but I think we're still holding our own, so. Anything else with respect to that?
Only one thing I would have to say is I'd love to give the reward to the one individual that was ninety-nine plus. They definitely need a, you know, kudos for their.
I could probably tell you who she was.
Okay. Well, no, can't say that, but it was quite something.
Yeah, it really is, isn't it? So, in any event, we'll, I guess we'll call the vote on this if there's nothing else. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Bylaw, ten point one, bylaw number twenty twenty three zero 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 one. We have a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty three utilities budget amend water sewer service charges. Now, with respect to this, if there is any conversation with respect to, we can do the motion, do the first reading, have some conversation, and then do the second and final reading. Or if everybody is good with it, we can, we can move through and do first, second, and final reading with respect to it, all under the same motion. Is first and second? Okay, I see there's an indication that we'll do the first and second reading. Perfect. So, we need a motion with respect to this bylaw. Put it on the floor. Counselor Pennell? First, Counselor Hicks? Bear with me for one moment. Ready first and second time, and finally passed the tenth day of January twenty twenty three. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty three zero 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 two, amend the zoning bylaw number zero two twenty two. Once again, we had this before us. If there's going to be any conversation, we can move it and have conversation between the first and second reading. If not, we can do first and second reading and do it all at once. First and second. Perfect. So, look for a motion with respect to bylaw twenty twenty three zero zero two. Counselor Martin, Deputy Mayor Calver read a first, second, and finally passed the tenth day of January twenty twenty three. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Bylaw number, and we'll do this again for the next three bylaws, twenty twenty three dash zero 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 three, bylaw to appoint a municipal auditor. If there's no conversations, what we can do is do it the same way again. Do it the first, second, and third, final reading. Need a motion to put it on the floor. Counselor Pennell, Counselor Hicks read a first, second time, and finally passed the tenth day of January twenty twenty three. All in favor? Did you want to discuss with respect to this?
The only, only, yeah, just the one.
Okay. Well, we can, well, we'll, we'll do a motion for, for the first reading, and then we'll do, we'll vote on that, and then we'll do the do I do it that way?
I, I just thought you could just, sorry, you're the chair. Whichever way you want to do it, I just thought you could do.
Can we have? Very good, Jessica.
Through your worship, if you're not looking to make any changes to the bylaw, and you're still comfortable with it being passed, and you just want to talk about it, we can have a discussion before the vote happens and still do it in one.
Okay, there's, there's our answer. Go ahead, Mike.
So, my only discussion is, I know it's kind of early at night. The only reason why is, when was the last time you went for an RFP for auditing services? Because the only reason why, I, we've just been newly elected, but I don't want to go ahead and get an audited statement at the last hour of council, all right, of the previous council, all right, doing twenty twenty one books at the end of twenty twenty two. So, if that's the problem here, you know what I mean? It's, it's just to keep everybody business, you know what I mean? It's nothing against them, you know? I, I, I just want to make sure that that this is addressed, that I don't have to wait to the end of the year, you know what I mean? To get an audited statement. And when was the last time you went for an RFP with, for, for auditing services?
And I think, Mr. Dobbie, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know. It's long before my time, and there's no record of the last time that an RFP was done. I would guess more than twenty years. It's, it's been quite a while. Municipalities tend to hold on to their orders a little bit longer. However, it is also common to go out about every five years for an RFP, five to ten years for an RFP. It is a good question and should be addressed. And if you'll notice that the municipal act directs to appointed auditor for up to five years. But this bylaws is passing it for twenty twenty two for the, for the one year, and then we'll come back and we'll bring some information from council and go from there. So, you won't be kept in the dark. We'll, we'll make sure that we talk to you about it.
You know what? I'm happy with that. I just, just for your information, I think it was about six, seven years ago that we went for an RFP. It's just that, as long as, as my other concerns are going to be addressed, that we get the audited statement, not at the end, you know what I mean? Next year, I'd just like to know financially where we're doing. But if we, if you addressed all those concerns, then I have no problem doing it for one year, and, you know, go from there.
And, and after Mr. Pinson wants to speak to, but I think that's the idea of doing it for one year. Counselor Schenk has said it's going to give us some flexibility with respect to next year as well, right? So, as opposed to doing a, for, for four years, it'll give us some flexibility, and we can stick with what we got, or we can maybe look at it, so. Is there anything further, Mr. Pinson, or no?
Fine, your worship. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Read a first, second, and finally passed this tenth day of January twenty twenty. Bylaw. Oh, do we not vote? Sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. My mind sometimes moves quicker than my brain, so her, my, 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 my voice, so. Bylaw twenty twenty three zero 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 four, bylaw to appoint municipal enforcement officer for winter parking. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor with respect to the bylaw to appoint a municipal bylaw officer. Deputy Mayor Calver. Counselor Pennell, once again, is there any comments or questions concerned before we do first, second, and final reading? Go ahead.
I, I just have one.
Yeah, sure.
Will Mr. Clark be able to issue fines?
I believe that he will, if he's been sworn in as a bylaw officer. I believe so. I think that's the purpose of it, is it not, Madam Clerk?
Yes, through your worship, this is just to, only for the next parking or any parking rules, but yes, anyone who's been sworn in under these bylaws is able to issue tickets.
Anything further? This bylaw, read a first, second time, and finally passes tenth day of January twenty twenty three. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Finally, bylaw number twenty twenty three zero 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 five, a bylaw to appoint municipal enforcement officers with respect to the smoking bylaw. We'll look for a motion with respect to that. Put it on the floor, and we can have some conversations if there's any questions. Counselor Pennell? Counselor Norrie, any questions or comments? Maybe we can clarify some stuff. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. My question would be to the clerk, is there any, any monetary figures that go with this? Is there a pay? They, they work for K F L, I believe? Public health?
Yes, through your worship, this, these individuals would not become employees of the municipality or be reimbursed. It's just giving them the authority in their role to enforce this one specific bylaw because it overlaps with your mandate.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead. No, nope. All good? Bylaw, read a first, second time, and finally passed the tenth day of January twenty twenty three. New business. Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up or speak to? Oh, sorry, we didn't vote again, did we? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I'll get it right eventually. New business. Any new business, anybody else, anybody wants to speak up, bring up, have a conversation about? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
I, I just wanted to ask if everybody knows about the Buffalo Bills player on the field incident where he had a heart problem. And I'm just curious as to whether everybody at our S P C center, our staff knows where the defibrillator is and what sort of use it. Do we have enough staff there? If we've moved people from there yet? I don't know, but do we have enough staff if, like, if we, are we down to two guys, like, flooding the ice? Could they be on the other side? When some of us old guys, Terry, are playing hockey on the other rink, and something happens, does, can we get to somebody fairly quickly? Do we have somebody available who is qualified all the time? I know we had some new attendants, did we not? I, I just asked, you know.
That's fair.
Your worship, we do have people trained on site for A E Ds, and also too, those systems are set up so that anybody could operate them. You don't actually have to be specifically trained.
Thanks, sir.
And just heard of that, only because I spend a lot of time there. I know that there's, there's actually two of them. One's in the main lobby, front lobby. Second unit, that's actually in the first aid room, which is at the back of the rink as well, which is centrally located between the two arenas, so, or the two ice surfaces, so.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, obviously, seconds and minutes count, so that made everybody aware. I think that was a scary moment there, so. I, I just wanted to make sure, double-check. For me, when we were playing hockey, the defibrillator on the back of the net would have helped me maybe, but, you know.
Yeah, I won't comment. I'll leave it at that. Probably some best, some things are best left unsaid, I guess. Is there anything else? No? If not, we'll move on to notice of motions. Does anybody have any notices of motion? Seeing none, statements by members. Are any, do any members have any statements? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
So, I have a, a letter that was dropped off to me earlier this week from a lady from down south. They're very concerned about what's going to take place with the South Fred Hall. Just starts out by, you know, clo- closing or selling South, South Fred Hall. It would be a mistake. The hall belongs to South Fred and Adolphus Town, not Greater Nappany. What el- what else is left south of Nappany? A tennis court's also gone. Phones need to be answered for the, for the reservations and get back to the people. Apparently, they've tried to call to book this hall, and nobody gets back to them. They play Uker. There's roughly thirty-six people there that could have, could have more if they had the room. We don't pay, as Kevin Hill said, but we could give something back if needed. So, apparently, there was a deal back in the day with Kevin Hill. Don't know about that one. There's ten bridge players that play there regularly, if not rented, if not rent S P C, if I wanted to haul too noisy for people from other activities to looking to book in. Moving all offices, what's going to happen with the Old Town Hall? Very difficult to make of this writing. She's just very upset, and she also said about the Gibridge District not getting finished. This is a historical town, and save the old buildings. Can I read this lady's name out, or is that?
I'll look to Madam Clerk. I, I mean, I don't see why you wouldn't. She submitted it to you, and I think, yeah, it was Marion MacArthur. And she's a very avid, avid, avid person for some of these things here, and very up, she was very upset the day she brought this letter into my shop and handed it to me, and just wanted to get right out to the, to the staff and the counselors, so. Yep, great. And duly noted. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Is, is there any other statements by members? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
My statement is, I want to personally thank, and I know the roads department, of course, emergency services, but all the municipality that protected and helped out during the snowstorm that we had. I know, I know I'm a farmer, and I was doing my part with the tractor, but I saw Mike Dwyer, I think, was on Boxing Day or the next day. I don't know. I was kind of confused, but he looked about as tired as I did, if not worse. And there's a man that went above him beyond the call of duty, and I know the chief did, and a lot of the staff did. And you have to understand, sure, that's their job and everything else, but they're all human too, and they've got kids at home, and a lot of the younger ones. So, you know what? It's Christmas time, so for them to partake and do what they've done, I think, kudos to them, and I'd like to personally thank them. I think they did a fantastic job. You saw some of the pictures that, it's, we had, you know, Terry, and some of the other council where you had one example is, I had to have a thirty-six ton excavator come in to do about five hundred yards of, of a driveway. There's no way I could do it with a hundred and sixty horsepower tractor or anything else like that. So, when you have ten to fifteen foot drifts for five hundred yards and probably sixty or seventy feet long, or wide, with the width, that was, wow. And that, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I think the, you know, they did a fantastic job doing that.
Yeah, no, no. Thank you very much, Mike. I mean, it, it's hard to fathom what happened over the course of the forty-eight hours, you know? I mean, it's something that many of us, you know, some of us that lived through the seventies, remember the nineteen seventy-seven snowstorm, but it's hard to fathom what our community went through. And, and I think for every day that goes by, we hear stories about the good stories, the good news stories. And, and I think it's very important that it be identified as, as Counselor Schenk did, that each and every one of our, our staff, each and every one of our community members, it could have been something as simple as taking a can of gas down the road to somebody for the generator, or, 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 you know, I've heard stories where a large construction company actually floated in a very, very large loader to get some of the residents out of their driveway. So, it, it just shows what kind of community we have, that everybody pulled together, everybody made sure that everybody else was safe, and, and we got through it. And it just, it's just, it's really, really refreshing to see things like that happen, especially in, in, in a time of need. So, thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Counselor Schenk. Appreciate that. Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Just further to that, myself being new to council, I could not believe how proactive everyone was. Emergency services, like getting the emails, you know, there's, there's a weather event forecasted. This is everything that we've done. And I don't think the residents fully appreciate what goes on behind the scenes. It's not just it's, it's everybody, and it's, it's the person typing the notice that's going to go out, that's being read and amended by the mayor. It's Bill, your, your team, everybody. I was very impressed. Like I said to my husband, I, I can't believe everything that's going on. He's, and he said to me on Friday, oh, I don't need to drive you into work. The weather, it's going to be fine. I drove home at two thirty, and I said, you are wrong. I can say unequivocally, you were wrong. It took me forty minutes to get from Nappany, fifty kilometers out River Road, so just very appreciative of all the, the upfront work behind the scenes that was done, so. Thank you.
Bill, I don't know where you got that weather information from. Absolutely fabulous. I really appreciate it being included, included in, or included in on that. Anytime something like that comes up, love to see it. Avid weather watcher myself, I've got weather stations here, there, and a few other locations, and nothing, I've seen nothing that accurate. And it was, it was bang on. It was just amazing. And I really appreciate you keeping us up on the, up in the loop on everything. And just the way, like you say, all of staff dealt with, I mean, you heard, heard people from the outskirts, but people even in the, in the north had no clue what took place in the south. I mean, this, this storm dumped on our area. And even, even where I live, out River Road, it was still even worse down south, the further south you went. So, no, it was handled very well. We only had one fatality, I think, for the whole, I mean, which, considering what was going on, pretty impressive. Yep, everybody did a great job. Keep those weather things coming.
Is there any other further statements? Seeing none, we'll move on to C O remarks. I'm not sure if Mr. Pinson has any remarks with respect to this evening, but.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Schenk sort of stole my thunder there. I wanted to, to especially thanks to.
I wanted to, to especially thanks staff and residents for everything, all their work during the storm. I would like to make a special note, you know, that we, we did talk at our after action as a result of this emergency, the length of time it did take to clear some roads. It's important to note that our, our operators spent a lot of time digging people out of ditches and making sure they were safe. So some of the roads didn't get plowed as quickly as we'd like them to get done. But they, our, our workers were pulling folks out of the road, making sure they were, they were safe. The last thing is, as everyone is, I'm sure well aware, we've, we've moved in now operational 99 advance. I think things are going relatively well. I always encourage people and residents, if there is something that they, they think we should know about how we administer those services, more than happy to hear that. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Pinson.
Do we have any signage there?
Sorry?
I'm sorry. Sorry, I just looked.
No, I just couldn't hear you, Mike.
No, I don't go by 99 events there every day. But do we have signs that says town of Greater Napanee on that?
Through your worship, I think that was put up yesterday or today. There is a new sign which says town of Greater Napanee.
There we go.
Okay. We'll look for a motion moving into closed session. We have a recommendation that council resolve itself inside, in, resolve itself into closed session in order to discuss matters related to personal information about identifiable individuals, section 239 sub two, sub B, and as well matters related to labor relations, section 239 two, sub D, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege 239 two, sub F. Moved by Counselor Pennell, seconded by Counselor Shank. All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, folks. We'll be back, we'll be back shortly. Thank you.
Okay, Rice report from closed session. We'll look for a motion. We had a council recommendation council Rice report from closed session and further that all recommendations made within closed session hereby adopted. Namely that the council rise report from closed session here and recommendations may within close session or hereby will need a motion for that. Counselor Pennell seconded by counselor Schenk questions comments. All in favor opposed carried and I guess they should have probably reported first but I'm going to do it now that you what we did in closed session was we approved the closed session minutes of December 20th 2022 and received information regarding matters related to personal information about identifiable persons or individuals to labor relations and to advice subject to solicitor client privilege and gave directions to staff. Moving on, we have a forward forward calendar which I'm sure that everybody had an opportunity to look for. We're not going to need a motion for that, but it is a great helpful piece moving forward and as we move forward, it'll move forward with us so. And we'll look for a motion to confirm proceedings. We have a biologic firm proceedings, the council of the corporation of town of greater Annapolis moved by. Counselor panel seconded by councilor Norrie read a first second and finally passed this 10th day of January 2023. Thank you everyone for watching. Sorry it was a late night, but sorry. Oh, sorry. Once again, we got a vote all in favor opposed carried again. Thank you for watching. It has been a late night. Bye bye.